Okay, I'd like to call the Mentor City Council regular meeting for October 1st, 2024 to order. We'll begin with invocation given by Councilperson Krieger.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with the continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
In reply of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Mern?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Freeman?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Okay, well, before we get started with our regular meeting agenda tonight, I want to acknowledge that we have got a packed house. And I think that everybody is here for the same reason that we're going to get to next. So Fire Chief Searls, would you please join me at the podium?
Thank you, sir.
Are there chiefs or here, do you?
Yep.
We're going to move this microphone up so we both can be heard. Most times when people retire at our age, and you're, I'm just a little younger than you, I feel real happy for them. I, I'm like, yes, you know, move on and enjoy your life. But with you, I'm sad. Sad because you have always been here with the city that I can remember. And you have served with, with great energy, dedication. You've gotten up in the middle of the night and gone places to help people, to save people. And I want to thank you for that. And I think all these people here are a testament to, to that end. And to that point, I want to read a few names, and then I want to read the highlights of our resolution from council. So amongst these people, very notable people, we have, and this is in no particular order, we have Eastlake Fire Chief Ted Whittington. We have Grand River Fire Chief Nathan Peters. Nathan, I just saw over there, I remember Nathan from years ago. Kirtland Fire Chief Tony Hutton. And from the City of Mentor, we have Deputy Chief Ron Zack. Deputy Chief Bob Evans. Fire Inspector Terry Scott. Battalion Chief Tom Keitel. From Painesville City Fire, we have Chief Thomas Hummel. Perry Fire Chief Dominic Chapone. From Willoughby Hills Fire, Chief Rob Gandy.
Hey, Rob.
Retired Mentor Fire Chief John Fowler. You're the one that hired him, right?
Right.
So also from Mentor Fire, we have retired Deputy Chief Tom Talka. And Dr. J Carter, EMS Director. Bob Zonerville, the VFW veteran post 1995. Bob needs no introduction, everybody knows it. And we have Deacon Bill Bries, Mentor Fire Chaplain. Union President Frank Piazza from the Fire Union. Retired firefighter inspector Kevin Patton. What a list, chief.
Brian Betner.
Oh, you live around the corner from me, don't you? I'm sorry I missed you. I've been, yep. All right, chief. So we all have some nice things to say about you, but your record speaks for itself. And to that extent, I'm going to present you with a resolution from Mentor City Council.
Thank you.
And like I said, we're going to miss you.
I'm going to miss everybody.
But I want to read part of this resolution. All of your accomplishments aren't listed here, or else I'd be speaking until tomorrow morning. But the heading of this is a resolution of commendation and congratulations to Fire Chief Robert M. Searls. Whereas, Robert M. Searls began his public safety service over 43 years ago as a full-time Lynnhurst police officer while simultaneously attending local fire school and paramedic school, and began his career with the Mentor Fire Department on September 14th, 1987, as a part-time firefighter, and then was hired as a full-time firefighter/paramedic on January 18th, 1988. Whereas, he was promoted to Fire Lieutenant in July of 1992, then to Fire Battalion Chief in September 1994, Deputy Fire Chief in May of 2000. Then, having risen through the ranks quickly in the department in a highly competitive promotion process, Bob was appointed Fire Chief on March 31st, 2014. And whereas, in 2014, he was named Ohio Firefighter of the Year by the Veterans of Foreign Wars. In March 2021, he is awarded the Penance of Gratitude for his extraordinary support to the Ohio Department of Public Safety, Division of EMS. And whereas Chief Searls, a true civil servant in every sense of the word, has worked well with the community, other fire and police departments, hospitals, the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, county agencies, and local utilities, and has led the men and women of the Mentor Fire Department by example with integrity and dedication to the citizens he has served all these years, protecting our community, saving countless lives, and has left an indelible mark on the Mentor Fire Department. Responding to thousands of emergencies and managing his crews at incidences safely and successfully. Whereas, the City of Mentor is beyond proud of the immeasurable accomplishments and contributions that make up the very impressive career of Chief Robert M. Searls and his immense dedication and strong commitment to community definitely runs in the family. As his wife Helen is a registered nurse, his son Robert, following in his father's footsteps, is a lieutenant paramedic for the City of Beechwood Fire Department. His daughter Shannon is a schoolteacher and mother of four. And his son-in-law Nate is an Air Force pilot and base commander flying F-15E Strike Eagles. Now, therefore, the council, the City of Mentor, County of Lake, and State of Ohio, on behalf of all citizens thereof, hereby commends Fire Chief Robert M. Searls and expresses its pride and deep appreciation to the public safety, education, and comfort of our citizens, and congratulates him on his well-deserved retirement from the Mentor Fire Department, and wishes him nothing but the best in the next phase of his life.
Thank you, sir.
I'll present this to you on behalf of Mentor City Council.
Thank you.
And we're not through saying nice things about you. I'm going to first have our city manager, Ken Filippiak, say some nice things about you, too. And we'll let you speak.
Thank you.
Chief, I had to write these down, so that's why I'm sitting. But first of all, let me just say that it's been an honor and a privilege to work with you over the last 15 years. And I can say that every one of the directors of the city, both past and present, feel exactly the same way about that. So we're going to miss you greatly. Some people have said to me in the past, hey, one of the best decisions you've ever made was hiring Bob Searls as chief. And I tell them that was the easiest decision I, I've ever made. Council President Blake has talked a little bit about some of your accomplishments. I'm going to add a few things to that. You've mentioned that you've been a 37-year Mentor Fire Department with us for 37 years. But a lot of people might not know, the Chief Searls is the only person to ever hold every rank in our fire department. We clarified that today, so very impressive in itself. In addition, he's provided leadership. Your legacy, chief, has been all about leadership, not just within our department, outside of, outside of the City of Mentor. You've been the Lake County Fire Coordinator, you've been president of the Lake County Fire Chiefs Association. You have been probably one of the most effective leaders with respect to school safety. And I can tell you that if the superintendent of Mentor Schools was here, he would be singing your praises on that account as well, not just at the local level, but at the state level. Chief was also a member of the Ohio Attorney General's School Safety Task Force, and very instrumental in making sure that fire and EMS services are a key component at any school safety plan. So we have a lot to thank you for, just outside of our immediate community. Chief, Chief Searls has made sure that Mentor has remained one of the best equipped, best trained, and most capable fire and EMS departments in the state of Ohio. He's expanded our fire prevention efforts in the city tremendously. He's advanced incident command and hazard zone management instruction, not just in Lake County, but throughout northeast Ohio. And I will say that along with a lot of the very, very fine gentlemen in this room, Chief Searls worked with all of them to meet the extraordinarily, extraordinary challenges we had during the COVID pandemic that included establishing the model vaccine distribution systems that have been copied statewide since, since we got started here in Lake County. I think as much as anything, though, what I respect the most about the chief is his, what he continues to repeat, which is this attitude of gratitude in our department. And what that means is it's pushing the notion that we're here to serve the residents first, and that we must always do more than what is expected, and went on a service call to ease the suffering of the people that we're, that we're serving, and to try to overcome any inconveniences that they have at their most vulnerable moments. I will say personally that I think chief is one of the most loyal and most caring public officials probably that I've ever known. He's one of the kindest people I know. Never fails to recognize the work of those around him, and as humble as any person can be, never once in the 15 years that I've known him, pointing to himself for credit for anything that the department has accomplished, even though the rest of us always know who to point to in those moments. So because of your leadership, chief, Mentor residents are safer in their homes. They can be confident that they will receive the very highest level of service when called upon. The City of Mentor Fire Department sets one of the highest standards and provides leadership throughout Lake County, and you've advanced that tremendously. An old fire chief that, that I used to work with years ago, used to head an expression that always sticks with me, which is that leaders are bricks in the foundation of the department that we leave behind. And thanks to your leadership, chief, that foundation here is rock solid and better than ever to build upon. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, City Manager Ken. Council President Blake, I'm honored. But it's always, it's always been a team effort. These guys, the fire department, everybody that I've had an honor to work with has been amazing. They've supported me, and they truly deserve all the credit. We have a great fire department here in Mentor. And our neighboring departments, you know, we wouldn't have got to do the many jobs that we've done without my fellow chiefs and the cooperation that we get from so many in this community. This has been an amazing community to work for, and the men and women of the Mentor Fire Department, dispatch, the police, all the city workers. I've been blessed to be a small part of this team in the City of Mentor that takes care of so many. And that team expands beyond Mentor to our county. I think the county has some of the best public safety service in the area. I've traveled the state, and I've seen that. And that's because of all these people right here, former Chief Prower, Chief Talka, the chiefs from the other community. And I can go on all night about the many good things that my colleagues do and the retired members of the fire department do, and the current members of the Mentor Fire Department, the police department, and all city departments. But I want to thank you for making public safety a priority in this community. You have improved the overall wellness of the community. And tonight, I have many, many, many people to thank, but I want to talk about city council a little bit. Before I do, I need to mention my family. I have a wonderful family, and I've been blessed. And I didn't expect everybody to show up here tonight, but I need to thank my wife Helen for all the support and the many times that I've left. And she's been supportive when, when I've had rough days. And my daughter Shannon, who can't be here today, yeah, her husband's a pilot in the Air Force, and he's doing great things out in Mississippi, but I don't get to see him too often. And I miss Shannon and Nate. My son Robert and his wife Sarah are here today, and my new grandson Beau is over there. And I want to thank them for coming. I want to thank all my families. My sister and my brother, who is also a physician, he's an orthopedic surgeon, and I don't get to see him a lot because he gets busy, but he made the trip up here from Cuyahoga Falls. And so thank you for that. And Terry, thank you. Glenn, Annette, Rick, and, and there's too many people here to thank tonight. Mr. Zonerville, thank you. And I'm going to try to make the rounds to thank the people and see the people before I go, and hopefully we'll keep in touch afterwards. But thank you for supporting me. I plan to spend time with my family, my grandchildren. I owe them some time. I hope I can make up some of the time with my, my grandchildren that I've missed. But I wanted to get back to talking about council, because that's all I expected tonight was a council meeting. And I wanted to express my gratitude to council and the city administration. Council, as fire chief, I've seen firsthand the support that city council and the city administration gives to us. Please know that you have always provided us the tools to succeed, and your support's been incredible. Thank you. Councilman Kirchner, thank you for all those fire trucks. I'm pleased to tell you, I'm pleased to tell you that our oldest engine, front line, is only 11 years old, and we've always had some of the best equipment around in the city of Mentor. But as you know, it's our people that make the difference. And I've been lucky to work with some pretty amazing people. The men and women of the Mentor Fire Department, the men and women of the public safety divisions in here in Lake County and throughout the state, the former chiefs that have, have really taught me a lot, and their current staff, and Annette, and the administration staff is amazing. I've been lucky to work with some amazing neighboring fire chiefs and department heads, and there's too many, again, to mention tonight. And I hope to get around to personally thank them. Tonight, I also wanted to thank Mr. Filippiak and Mr. Fowler. Thank you. I hope you share my retirement letter with council, because it's hard to express my full appreciation for what you have done for me and this fire department and our city. And Mr. Zampedro and Mr. Fowler, as assistant city managers, have helped me and have guided me and have kept me on track with some things. I've watched the men and women of our fire department and all the city departments, and our neighboring fire departments, and our neighboring chiefs perform some extraordinary tasks for the public. And I couldn't be prouder of the service that they delivered. I want to thank them for all their support as, as I had worked as just a small piece of this department and this public safety delivery system. But most of all, I want to thank the residents of Mentor. I want to thank the residents of Mentor because they have been so tremendous to our community, their support with the fire levy and everything that they've done. I want them to know that it's been an honor to serve this community, and I appreciate that support after all these years. I'm going to try to get around to thank all you guys. There's so much that I'm grateful for, so much that I've learned from you guys. Kevin, we worked on shift together, and you just have been amazing. I think I've learned so much about taking care of people from you. And I'll just tell a quick story about Kevin Patton, who, who was one of the great guys. We had a, we had a fire on Route 306, and Station 3 and 4 responded to that, and Kevin was on the attack of that fire. And I watched Kevin put the fire out, come back to the rescue squad. And at that time, we had teddy bears in the back of the squad that we would give to children that were injured. And I watched Kevin Patton come back to the rescue squad and get a teddy bear out of the back of the squad and take it to the little girl that was a victim of a house fire. And that's one example of the many, many things that the amazing men and women of our fire department and our neighboring departments do. It's beyond fire service, it's beyond, you know, the traditional fire service. It's about taking care of people. You know, I respect your time here tonight. I am so grateful for the recognition that you gave me. I didn't expect this tonight. I'm so grateful for my family, and I'm going to get with you guys later, and thank you. But I wish each of you, the City of Mentor, the Mentor Fire Department, and all the departments in the city, in the community, great success. Please keep taking good care of people. Thank you for what you've done to me. Take care of your families and stay well. It's been an honor. It's been a true honor. Thank you.
Hey, Bob, I just want to say that I, I hope your successor is adept as you have been over the years in getting approval for fire trucks EMS on the first reading. He's got Bigfoot shoes to fill. No, we've got a little bit more to go. Okay. All right. So moving on. Council, you're in receipt of the minutes of the September 17th, 2024 regular meeting. Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Okay. Public hearings, we have none. Tabled legislation, we also have none. New legislation, ordinance number 24-0-069.
An ordinance to authorize revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. Members of council, this ordinance authorizes an appropriation revision. It is a $53,000 increase to the city's general fund for the purpose of additional funds that are needed on five new ballistic shields for our police department. I would recommend approval. Thank you.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-0-069 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 24-0-070.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to the Sutfin Corporation for the purchase of a new Sutfin SPH 100 custom-built mid-mount aerial platform with pump and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I would ask council to do this as a first reading this evening, as the administration continues to review some other details and priorities within the department. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President, I've moved for first reading.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 24-0-070 has been given its first reading. Next is ordinance number 24-0-071.
An ordinance enacting Chapter 752, Section 752.01, 752.02, 752.03, and 752.04 of Part 7, Business Regulation Code of the Codified Ordances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended to establish prohibitions against short-term rentals in all zoning districts and declaring an emergency.
I am going to ask our law director to give us comment on this ordinance.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of council. This and 072 are companion pieces of legislation. A little bit of foundational background. What is a short-term rental? It's, it's basically a species of hotel. The main difference being that hotels are facilities licensed by the State of Ohio, consisting of more than five guest rooms. A short-term rental also offers transient sleeping accommodations, but they're five or less guest rooms. And so everyone's kind of familiar with Airbnb or Verbo and things of that nature. Those are the hosting platforms. And very often, then, you'll see these short-term rentals in residential districts, condominiums, apartments, single-family detached homes, and even in commercial districts. They are not permitted in the City of Mentor. And that, unfortunately, there's a little bit of confusion out there amongst property owners as to how that could be the case. Zoning regulations aren't like your typical law. Your typical law says, don't do something. Don't speed, don't take something that doesn't belong to you. And, and so people are sort of used to those types of laws. In terms of zoning, though, it's a little bit different, because you can't have a zoning code which says, here's the million things that you can or can't do. Rather, they're structured more specifically around what you are permitted to do or conditionally permitted to do. Short-term rentals are a species of commercial use that are simply not permitted in residential nor most commercial, nor the commercial districts in the city. There's one exception to that, which I'll mention very briefly. And yet, the confusion is, because there's a law that says you can't do it, the assumption then, unfortunately, some property owners is that you can. And so we do have to undertake enforcement on that basis. This would therefore sort of clarify for all the property owners in the city that this is a species of business which is regulated such that it's prohibited. And so therefore, it comes into the Business Regulation Code. I'll just then, because it's companion legislation, I'll briefly address 072 as well. Short-term rentals are actually permitted in one zoning classification, and it's actually the planned development overlay. As you know, that's essentially the Bolton property, which is the only area that's, that's zoned for that currently. There's also a provision in the accessory use code for residential districts where you can get a conditional use permit for renting of rooms. And that's a little confusion because we don't define what renting of rooms is. It seems very archaic, you know, to my judgment. It, you know, probably refers to an old boarding house concept. But to the extent it might arguably look like a short-term rental, and whether or not persons should be able to apply for a conditional use permit, the recommendation is to also clean up, so to speak, in terms of housekeeping, getting rid of some of these archaic terms in the zoning code, and actually strike renting of rooms as a conditionally permitted accessory use. I've been around for about 20 years. I think we've had maybe one conditional use permit requesting it. And it was actually more of a roommate situation than renting of rooms. So it's not something that, in my experience, for two decades, has actually even, even come in front of the planning commission. And again, in my judgment, it's a very archaic term. And more to the point, for purposes of council desiring perhaps to regulate short-term rentals, it would probably be a significant source of confusion moving forward. So I'm going to recommend that both of these ordinances then be placed on for first reading, with ordinance 072, then refer to the planning commission, which is required by code for recommendation. The reason for that is, our code states that any amendments to the zoning code must first be referred to the planning commission. They make a recommendation, positive, negative, neutral, and then it can be, then that recommendation So for ordinance 071, again, I recommend it be placed on first reading.
So moved.
Thank you, Joe. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Moving to approve. Ordinance number 24-0-071 has received its first reading. Next is ordinance number 24-0-072.
An ordinance amending Sections 1157.02 and 1158.05 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended by repealing all provisions related to renting of rooms and short-term rentals and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I've moved for first reading.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Moving to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Moving to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll on that one.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Now I can say ordinance number 24-0-72 has received its first reading. Ordinance number 24-0-073.
An ordinance amending Part 13 Title VII of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended to enact new section 1367.10 to regulate the use of portable storage units in all residential districts and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Joe, you are done.
Yes, Mr. President, members of council. Another housekeeping item, another, I don't know why this one's a point of confusion, quite frankly, because these are interesting things that we're experiencing here and there in the city. A portable storage container, we have, sometimes people are like, why do you need another law? Well, we have an illustration, we're not going to identify any property, but this is a location in the City of Mentor, which is a Conex container next to somebody's house. Again, we're not picking on anybody here, but we're just indicating that these things tend to pop up a little bit here around the city, and they're not necessarily expressly regulated in the sense that there's not a, a code which says you can put it here or there or somewhere else, as we do with other types of permanent improvements, or vehicles, or any, just virtually anything else in the residential districts. But they'll pop up on somebody's driveway, and they'll seem to stay there for an extended period of time. Sometimes, as here, it's on the side of somebody's house for an extended period of time, or the backyard, the front yard for that matter. What are they being used for? That varies sometimes. Sometimes they're, they're there temporarily because someone's moving in and out. Sometimes there's permitted construction activity taking place. Sometimes they're there for, in response to some emergency situation. And obviously, there was a horrible storm recently, and damage to persons' homes may require some temporary storage while the, while the property is, is repaired. On the other hand, they seem to be used in lieu of sheds, accessory structures, or, you know, garages, things of that nature, for long-term storage. And again, unlike a shed where, or a detached garage where the zoning code has area limitations, setback limitations, height limitations, and other substantive restrictions, there really isn't anything regulating these. And again, they're, they're being used as sheds in some instances, or they're, or they're just popping up on someone's driveway and being used long-term. And, and obviously, a lot of the zoning controls are to address something which obviously is starting to be used as a permanent improvement, and yet simply doesn't belong in a residential district, I think is, is a fair assessment. They're not sightly obviously, they're not, they're not conforming with what most of our residents would expect our residential districts to be maintained as. They can have a blighting impact, certainly they impact, you know, visually on, on, you know, the view amenity of individuals in the neighborhood. And frankly, they're in areas that it might even be unsafe. This one, obviously, you know, obstructing a garage, obstructing ingress and egress perhaps for our safety services. So these regulations then would be a species of property maintenance. They would prohibit the placement of these portable storage units in residential districts except under very limited circumstances, one of which, as we just mentioned, would be in response to moving in and out. And so there's a time window, seven days, where again, if you're moving in, moving out, and you have a portable storage unit to facilitate that move in or out, that, that again makes some sense. If there's going to be construction activity taking place, as part of the building code issuance, you can, you know, determine that the, the storage container would be appropriate. And then there could be some, some discussions with the building department as to its appropriate location on the site. And, and then further, as indicated, should there be a storm or other type of calamity strike a structure, these could be used under emergency circumstances, again, for a limited period of time, so that person's household possessions and furnishings can be secured, again, in response to that emergency. Otherwise, they would just not be permitted in residential districts as proposed in this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Moved to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Moving to approve.
Mr. Kirchner, we have two people before council like to speak on this ordinance.
They didn't, they didn't complete the form all the way, so we can't tell what they wanted to talk about.
No, I talked to them before, so I...
I tell you what, let's, let's bring you up before we, we do the first. If you would like to come up to the podium, give us your name and address, and keep it under four minutes, would be great.
Yeah, it's not, but I had a feeling somebody said it. Did you get...
Jonathan Bruno, resident of 4486 Brighton Road. I live directly across of that. I understand that we're talking about suspending it, not having this. My issue is, I want it clear, is this going to be removed from site? Not, I'm not asking off the property. If it is, awesome, but I want it out of sight from my house. You know, everyone around, they don't have to look at it unless they go out to the street. I have to see it from every portal of the front of my house, every single day, all day long. That is my request, and that's what I'm asking if this is what part of this is going to be, is the removal of this structure.
So if, if we pass this tonight, that will be a code violation. Is it grandfathered in, Joe?
Again, this may be in code enforcement. I don't want to speak specifically, and again, we don't, the purpose of, of this exhibit was not to call out anyone specifically, but to the extent it's already in code enforcement, it's just not appropriate as, as, as the city's attorney to comment on any specific enforcement. I think the takeaway, though, is this is the type of use and location of a portable storage unit that this code is, is designed to specifically address.
Okay. I understand that's a future. I'm asking for the present. And I understand you can't, I just...
It may be in code enforcement, and that's why I just want to leave it at that and not comment publicly about anything that, that, that we're doing in that respect. It's just not ethically appropriate to do that, sir.
Okay. No, I understand that. Thank you.
Okay. Was there anybody else wanted to speak about this? Rachel Lahovic?
I mean, I understand how this could be done today, but we should keep talking.
Okay, you'd have to come up to the podium. Okay. So you're good. Okay, thank you. Okay, did we have a, a motion?
I think we're on approval.
Yeah, we need a second.
Second.
Okay. Got a couple seconds. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Moving to approve. Ordinance number 24-0-073 has been approved. Next, we have resolution number 24-R-117.
A resolution declaring the necessity of repairing and reconstructing certain sidewalks in Zone 4D associated with the 2024 pedestrian safety program in the City of Mentor, requiring that abutting property owners repair same, ratifying and confirming notices, authorizing repair of construction of said sidewalks by the city engineer, and in certain cases, providing for assessment of costs and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Swiger, please.
Thank you, Mr. Filippiak. Between May and July of this year, the city completed sidewalk inspections in Zone 4D of Ward 4, and that was about 13 miles worth of sidewalk. This is an area bounded by Becker Avenue, State Route 44, Lake Shore Boulevard, and Lake Erie. The locations of properties with deficient sidewalk have been identified in Exhibit A in the legislation. Total of 540 out of 752 parcels, or about 72%, were found to have deficient sidewalk. 1,832 sidewalk slabs were found to have deficiencies requiring, requiring repair or new construction. Of this total, the city will be replacing 251 slabs adjacent, adjacent to existing street trees, 120 slabs related to manhole and utility and storm sewer construction, and 311 slabs related to ADA ramp lowering. Additionally, the city will be constructing 80 handicap ramps at intersections, and the homeowners will be responsible, responsible for replacing the remainder of 1,150 slabs. Overall, this amount of concrete work is about $650,000 for repair and replacement of concrete sidewalk. This legislation is a resolution of necessity which declares it is necessary to repair the sidewalk deficiencies identified in Exhibit A in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and the Mentor Municipal Code. Upon council approval of this resolution, property owners will be notified and provided 45 days to make the repairs. Repairs not made within 45-day time period will then be made by the city's sidewalk contractor next year, with costs being assessed back to the property owners. The interest rate for the assessed work will be 4% per year for three years. This rate was recently adjusted to be in line with current market rates, and the engineering department will keep you informed as the program proceeds.
Thank you.
Moved to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Resolution number 24-R-117 has been approved. Second readings, we have none. Third readings, we have ordinance number 24-0-060. So Ken, Joe, who'd like to... Oh, sorry, read it, Julie, sorry, I'm in a hurry.
An ordinance amending the Codified Ordinances of the City of Mentor 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by rezoning of approximately 2.68 acres from M1 Light Manufacturing District to B2 General Business District at 5879, 5865, and 5855 Heasley Road. Parcel numbers 16B-06400007 dash, it's really zero, 16B-06500001 and 002-0, providing for the submission of this ordinance to the electorate and declaring an emergency.
See, I tried to save you all that.
There you go. I know.
All right. Ken, Joe, whoever...
Thank you, Mr. President. It's our understanding that the applicant has withdrawn his rezoning request, so no further action would be required by council.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd make a motion postponing definitely.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 24-0-060 has been postponed indefinitely. Managers report. Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Council of the City of Mentor will host once again a Veterans Day ceremony at 11:11 a.m. on Monday, November 11th, to honor those who have served our country. This year's ceremony will be held at the Mentor Municipal Cemetery Memorial Promenade at 6881 Hopkins Road. The public is encouraged to attend, as well as veterans groups. Please contact our Recreation Department for any additional details. The ceremony will be recorded and aired later on the Mentor Channel for those who are unable to attend. In the event of inclement weather, the ceremony will be moved to the Mentor Senior Center at 8484 Munson Road. Fall yard waste pickup begins on Monday, October 21st, on irregular trash pickup day for our residents. Residents can put out up to 25 units of yard waste per week, which is up from the standard to 12 units the rest of the year, and that will run through Saturday, December 14th. A unit is considered one bag, a bundle, or a container of yard waste, and full details are on the city's website. City continues to offer new tree lawn trees to interested residents who have appropriate planting sites. Residents who are interested in the fall tree planting should complete a street tree request form filed on our city's website and submit that to the Public Works Department. We anticipate that the planning will probably start in later October, so we encourage residents to get those requests in now. Any street trees, street trees that the city does put in place are free of charge to our residents. We remind our residents, council, that golf carts are prohibited on all City of Mentor streets. In addition, these vehicles are prohibited from operating on sidewalks and bike paths or all-purpose paths throughout the city. Driving a golf cart on a public street in Mentor can result in a traffic citation. During the month of October, council, firefighters of the Mentor Fire Department are again wearing T-shirts in support of breast cancer awareness. And with the imminent retirement of our fire chief, Bob Surles, I have appointed Ron Zack as the acting chief in the interim. That's all.
Congratulations, Chief Zack.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ken. Clerk's correspondence.
Counsel's in receipt of the Mentor Municipal Court month-end report for August of 2024. And that is all.